Eighty-three fifty.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda is to approve the minutes of March twenty-fourth and March thirty-first.
I didn't hear anything. Make a motion, we accept the minutes.
Second. On the minutes of the March twenty-fourth meeting, the third page, under special projects, the children's center and sexual assault crisis support center. At the end of that, it says the consensus of the board was to not fund these two new requests.
Right.
It was.
Right.
I thought we funded them.
No.
No, those were new. Those were new requests.
But we, didn't we fund that?
No.
We funded everything from previous years and, and the board voted three to four to one maybe to give friends of the common see watershed five thousand.
Yeah, but we didn't, we didn't approve those two minutes. So those minutes are correct.
I had proposed, Douglas, to not fund the red cross and split that between those two, but the board did not do that.
Okay, so there's been a motion by Mike and a second by Harold to approve the minutes of both meetings or just one meeting? Like you need to get a verbal from Chris.
Need a verbal, Chris.
She's done mute.
Yes, sorry. Yes, I approve.
Next thing we need to have is apartment head reports and I think Chief of All Heron, you're there. Hi Kevin.
There he is.
Hi, can you hear me? The only thing that I really have is on April twenty-fourth, we are going to have a drug take back. That's going to be down at the transfer station lower lot by Burley's Shack. And that'll be from ten to two, Saturday, the twenty-fourth of April.
Did you say Burley's Shack?
Yep.
I remember Burley. He used to work for me at the mill.
His name is right over the door.
Yeah, that's right. I remember that now. You're right.
That's all? Yes, okay. Thank you. Oh, Dan, Dan, Chief Roy, you're there.
Yeah, good evening. Tomorrow night's business meeting, we're going to be giving out recognition awards to all the firefighters deserving of those awards. This was in lieu of our annual dinner that we had to cancel due to the pandemic. So we'll be setting aside probably half an hour of our business meeting to hand out the awards. It's pretty much firefighter of the year, junior firefighter of the year, service pins, et cetera. On this Saturday, we're going to be participating in the Monmouth Academy Spring Block Party right over at Monmouth Academy. So we'll be sending a fire engine and hopefully Sparky will be making a visit. And I believe they can have a bunch of games and we'll have the truck for the kids to climb through and get pictures with Sparky. Now, that's from nine to eleven in the morning. Currently, we're in the process of doing our officer evaluations. We do this every year. Been doing it for several years now, and I think it's a critical component of, you know, promoting our officer development. So looking forward to doing those in the next couple of weeks. The Monmouth Fireman's Auxiliary is going to be conducting a chicken to go dinner on May first. That's Saturday. So we'll be advertising for that coming up. So hopefully get your orders in and it's pretty similar to last year's ham to go dinner. It'll be chicken this time. On Sunday evening, the nine eleven committee will, will be kicking off our, our fundraising event. This is five months in advance of our dedication of our memorial that we're going to be constructing at the center station. So Sunday, the eleventh, we'll, we'll be getting some postings out on Facebook and a GoFundMe account to raise funds for that. Again, we're, we're estimating it's going to be about twenty thousand dollars to construct this. But we're going to do it with no taxpayer money. So we'll be advertising that come Sunday. And then the last, the last thing I got is on, also on Sunday evening, the Monmouth Beach Party. This is going to be our fifth annual Monmouth Beach Party. As you know, we had to cancel last year's event, but this year we're moving forward. And we've locked it in for July third down at the town beach. So the committee is going to be having their first meeting to get together and start planning for that event. Again, we're going to scale things back a little bit. So there'll be hopefully less congest congestion, you know, down at the beach, you know, as far as activities and stuff. But we'll, we'll follow proper safety guidelines as best we can to help promote safety of the event. And as we get closer, we'll, we'll advertise what, what those safety protocols will be. And that's, that's pretty much all I got for the fire department. Unless there's any questions.
Dan?
Yes.
Consider this my pre-order for Susan and myself for two chicken to go dinners.
You're the first, first one.
And as far as the GoFundMe for the, for the memorial there, and will there be a way to make direct contributions? So you don't have to pay the GoFundMe premium?
Yes, yeah, we, we discussed that at our meeting and we're going to have it advertised so that in lieu of those that don't want to do the GoFundMe account, they can send a check or cash or whatever direct to the fire department. You know, via our mailbox, or you can contact one of our committee members and we'll get flyers out and we'll advertise all that information.
And then as you know, every year I do help you with the logos and flyers for the beach party. I'll also be happy to help you with the flyers and letters and whatnot for the project for the memorial too, if you'd like. Call on me anytime.
Okay, thank, thank you, Tim. Anybody else?
Dan, yeah, when did you say the block party was? The MA block party?
It's going to be this, this Saturday. So Saturday, the tenth, from nine to eleven at Monmouth Academy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's it, right?
Keith? Did you have any?
No.
Yeah.
I've got a couple of questions for Keith. Okay. There's a couple, Keith, one is, is salt shed that you need? Is, is there any, I know at one time in statutory requirements, you have to have one up by a certain time. Well, I love Bobby Kitzner. Did that ever change or is that?
I have no idea.
If I might just address that for you, Monmouth is not in any of the watershed danger areas for that. So we don't qualify for any state funds or, and there is no state mandate for us to have one.
I think we missed the
Well, for, for a while, because I looked at, this is something that's going to come up eventually. I'm just wondering if that was something that, you know, it's right on the chopping block, you know, where we're still finalizing and still have time to get it as an article on the warrant. And if there was a statutory requirement, you know, we might want to get it on. Let the voters decide whether we should get it or not. And then Keith, well, I bet you, there was a petition put together two years ago that apparently nobody knows about.
Okay.
For some reason, talking with Doug and other people, for some reason, this never hit the radar for Cressy Road. And I know we've had some discussions, Tim's brought up Cressy Road. It's a real, it's a mess. And be at these, I did craft an article to address this because of this, you know, the sad that these, these folks extended themselves to try and get something like this. Nobody knew about it. I just learned about it last week because I think it was on March three of that. Mr. Woodman sent it out. They, I don't know, Linda doesn't know what happened. I guess he just stumbled upon it not that long ago. It was obviously prior to you. What's the worst section and what's your recommendations on that road? Or if we were going to do reconstructing, reconstruction?
Yeah, the worst part is just where you come into the off two oh two. After you get past Highmore Farms trees, you know, the apple trees, I mean, they're there. That's, that always gets real bad. Then it comes out of it by air parities, you know, where that is, where it goes uphill, it's that's what it is. It's fine from there on. And the next bad part is Pine Hill, actually.
Yeah.
From the cut top corner. Other than that, it's, it's not horrible. And I recommend a photo gravel.
Yeah.
That go box, that box and fabric. And I talked to Badad, the one that contracted, he did Gilman and Packet. Said that that would probably be like a million, million to do it that way.
Yeah.
He said Gilman Road, he had six to three inches throughout of just gravel. I said, it was what, four fifty mile, something like that.
That's what, yeah.
Yeah, but he had catch basins and undergroundage.
I don't see we needing catch patients on that. Just, you know, anecdote, I'm not a roadrunner.
Right.
Just to see that.
Well, it does flood down by the railroad tracks every year.
Not anymore.
Did you finally resolve that?
It was two years ago. It was flooded. So, yeah, that's why it wasn't that year. Yeah.
I don't know if I'm muted.
We can hear you, Chris.
Because in the, excuse me, I grabbed the wrong mask. I think I got the dusty one. I shouldn't have thrown it out. It had one point two miles on, on the Cressy Pine Hill Road. And then there was this about half a mile left on the cemetery road.
Oh, yeah.
That we, we put in there and there's a sum of up to nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We just want to make sure that we have enough money to do it the proper way. These numbers were based on what we did with Gilman Road. I know there wasn't as much gravel as you wanted to put in there.
Right.
Still, you know, there's still time to adjust. And I'd have to ask Linda, we got into this and we found that the Cressy Road just needed more. Could that money be pulled from the cemetery project and defer that and do what you need to do on the Cressy Pine Hill?
The cemetery project, meaning cemetery road where you said?
There's a half a mile.
Yeah.
And if we got into it, we just, because I know, what are we talking about?
Well, this is going to come up under the warrant, Mike.
Right, but what we have him right here.
We stay, we stay. Yeah. You're getting authority from the voters to borrow the money.
Right.
And you're laying out the projects, what they are.
The scope of project.
If the project, if it passes, you don't have to borrow the money. If you had money come in from, say, a federal grant somewhere, you could use that.
Right.
But, you know, it doesn't say exactly how much goes to each road, I don't think, does it?
We don't have a question on those roads. So what are we talking about? It's, it's going to be proposed.
And I'm going to.
Okay, so we're talking about it like it's a done deal and, and I don't know anything about it and it's not. Okay, now I know.
And that's why I'm talking to him, is just put this thing together based on.
Well, I tell you right now, I'll vote against it because it's last minute. I won't even consider it.
My key was to stay for the whole meeting.
I'll address that right now with you because it seems that you have road rash of what happened at the last meeting. I want to address that. I don't think that's on the agenda, Doug. Is it? I'm going to address your comment because obviously you have some rash about what happened with the last vote. And it's coming through in my mind, this question that you want to propose. So the school question that I spoke about having the voters have the right to decide was something that was well researched. Over a two-year period, two options were presented and it's something that has to be done this year. The school building has to be addressed this year. There's no option to wait for another year. So this coming up last minute like this, just it strikes me the wrong way. There's been no research on this. There's no, been no discussion on this. And I'm certainly not going to, from my, well, I'm not going to consider it.
And if I might add, I, I think the prudent thing to do would be to direct the town manager to get and a cost of an engineering and survey study for that road, those, those, the roads. So we have an accurate cost of what it's going to take to repair them. And put that on the very next warrant if we can.
I have no objection to getting the accurate engineering study, the engineering cost and, and putting a question that's well researched on next year's warrant. I have no objection to that. Let the people decide if they want to do that. Absolutely. This is too last minute and it's not, there's no, there's nothing in writing. There's no research, no engineering study. There's, there's Keith's estimate, which I believe he is very knowledgeable, but again, I'm not opposed to letting the, the voters decide if they want to do this work or not. I'm just opposed to the way this is being done. And I forget, I have absolutely no issue with this going on next year's warrant after the research and the study is done.
And that's fair enough, Harold, but it is last minute because I just found this. And, and it just doesn't seem apropos to just ignore something that these folks that live on this really lousy, lousy road just get, get ignored again. And I think we have sufficient data to make a best guess on what we can do. If we're saying up to one point two miles or up to nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, at the very minimum, we could get some of it done. And I, I believe we could get a good portion of that. So it's, it's, it does sound last minute, but again, this, this thing that was buried in a file, which it never should have been. If you checked your email, you would have, you probably saw this sent over from
I did.
Mr. Woodman.
I did.
And, and it's just, if I was one of these people, I, I would be madder than a wet hornet. So I'm making a hail Mary for these folks that live on this road that is sinking into the fire and hoping that you take some consideration to it. And I am using your words, Harold. It's either we accept it or the voters accept it or they don't.
I'm not in favor again of putting something on that hasn't been vetted, researched. We don't have the facts behind it. We're spitting in the wind. So let me also, on the, the Gilman and Packet load, will give you some background on that. We had residents for a couple, at least a couple, three, four years that were coming to meetings and asking us to put a question on to pave those roads, particularly the Gilman Road. And at the time, we didn't, we didn't refuse to put a question on. We talked with, as I recall, the way this went down. We took, we talked with the, with the interested parties and said, look, right now, we don't think that question would pass because we have this debt load that we're working on. But this debt load is going to be reduced. It's going to be gone at this particular time. And it's my commitment to you and, and the rest of the board at that time, as I recall, committed that as soon as that, that load was gone, we would put that question on the warrant. We asked them if they would be agreeable to that. We didn't just say, that's what we're going to do. We said, would you be agreeable to that? Because it gives you the best chance to get it passed. And they all said yes.
Harold, this is it. And this comes right back around to a point I was trying to make last week when you shot it down. And you said, we are not gatekeepers of anything. So I think I made my point. Thank you very much.
I think you have made your point.
And I will also point out that when we did the subsequent survey on the Packet Road, we found out we didn't own a thousand feet of the road. And what was it? A couple hundred feet was on somebody else's property. Yeah. So it's, it's not prudent for us if they can do this without accurate, an accurate engineering study. And I would like to see a cost for that study and engineering and design soon, so we can put it on the very next warrant that we're going to have. Because we may very well have an election in November. I don't know what the state's going to do, but if we have an election, I would favor putting that on that, on that warrant.
Okay. Linda?
My report? All right. So there is light at the end of the control panel. And I started signing some of the closing paperwork this week. I don't have a date yet, but we know it's the fifteenth or before. So hopefully that'll be happening shortly. As soon as I know it's happening, I'll let you know. And as soon as I have the check in my hand, I will photocopy it and send it to all of you. It's in the process.
There is a sign on Route two oh two, just before the one thirty-two intersection that says Cottrell School. You might want to contact DOT to have that removed.
Okay, yeah, I did talk to them because I thought originally the state wanted that sign. And so I had reached out to DOT.
That's not the one he wants.
Oh, it isn't?
He wants the sign that says Cottrell School on the physical property.
Okay.
The wooden sign in front.
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about?
So I did talk to DOT months ago about that sign. They said, go ahead and pull it. So maybe we can just pull that.
And if I might interrupt, Keith, if he does not have that sign from the Cottrell School yet, I believe it was consensus from the board to give it to him. If you could take care of that, that'd be helpful.
Fill in the holes afterwards. So it looks nice and neat. We did receive a petition on Monday of this week from well over two hundred registered voters of Monmouth regarding the playground that the board did not put on the warrant at the last meeting. We certified the number of petition signatures that they needed. So now the question is pretty much out of your hands. Your, you shall put this question on either the next warrant or a special meeting. And since they made it in time, we should be putting it on this and not calling a special meeting and incurring the extra cost of that. So when I read the warrant articles tonight, I will read the playground article with that. And just to note, I did send you some paperwork about the playground that I had received, which shows a price of thirty-three thousand plus. But the petition itself says no more than thirty thousand dollars. So we'll leave the question wording the same way that it was. And so we're good with that.
You had some drawings and setbacks and everything else that.
You should have gotten that. I sent that to you. I emailed it to everyone.
So if those, those are accurate, that's something that.
I.
That was my question. It had, when this thing came up, just for, just for the record, had somebody presented some drawings and where this thing was going to fit. I would vote for it right to get there, but there was no interest in doing it at that time.
When the time comes, you know, we're, we're probably going to be getting the co-enforcement officer involved too, to make sure all the setbacks are all good. But yeah, I did send you drawings that I had received. No, I didn't go out and double check the drawings to see if they were okay. But we're a ways off. We've got to get the question passed.
Right.
Then our purchasing policy requires of this be put out to bid because it's over ten thousand dollars. So we'll do that at the time as well. I have put on your tables in front of you this evening, a spreadsheet on road paving that Keith brought to me today. This was put together originally by the former public works director. But the little notes that you see handwritten on the left-hand side are notes that Keith has made because I think that his, he's reprioritizing some of those roads. Just so you know, when we go to our CIP meeting that I'm having with the department and division heads in a couple of weeks, we will be discussing paving and it'll be all paving and including all the dirt roads in town as well. So that's going to be part of our discussion. And lastly, I just wanted to let you know that you already noticed that you have a question on the table that Mike had submitted regarding Cressy and Cemetery Road. And the other thing that I wanted to let you know is I think we're going to do some kind of a survey at the June election. Just a survey for the voters to let us know what some of their priorities are. So do they want to spend X amount of dollars to say, pay Cressy Road or, you know, pay dirt roads? You know, do they want a community center? Do they want a track? Whatever we come up with that we'd like to put out there for, you know, not a huge survey, but something that they can fill out and either drop in a box at the polling place or drop off at the town office, just so that we can kind of get a feeler out there in the public for, you know, what's important to them these days and what they're looking at. And that's my report.
Sorry, I forgot Mike. Thank you. Oh, next thing on the agenda is a select board report. You've already heard a lot of that.
Yes, it was my intention tonight to bring up a question too about starting a capital fund for the young fire department. Because in the, in the, just in future, I'm sure long after I'm gone, there will be a need to replace that station. However, recent developments with the school department have greatly alarmed me. I called, I actually put in calls to two of the school, our school board representatives. One of them did return my call. The other one has not. And for those who, who don't know, there will be a meeting Monday night, a Zoom meeting for select boards and the school department. They will not allow public comment from anybody else who zooms in, but it is a public meeting. And I would urge everyone who has the time, even if they can't comment, to zoom in and listen. The school department is proposing a one point, almost a one point seven million dollar increase in the budget spread across the five pounds. Monmouth, again, because we have the lion's share of the budget, we're responsible for about thirty percent of it. This year it could be thirty-one or two. I'm not sure what the exact percentage is. But we're going to be responsible for five hundred eighty-two thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and eighty-one cents currently. Now, in my conversation with the school board person that, that did return my call, it doesn't look promising that they're going to be able to adjust that budget much. That particular figure is over a one point three mil increase by itself. And if your house, let's say, is two hundred thousand dollars after your homestead exception, that's about a two hundred and sixty dollar a year increase. My concern is if we keep going with three quarter, half mil, one mil increases from the school department, memory is going to be pretty darn high in a couple, three years. We're not going to be able to afford to pave roads. We're not going to be able to afford to buy new equipment. We're not going to be able to afford to do a lot of things. We're going to be paying mostly for the school. And I'm, I'm very alarmed by that. And, and it's going to seriously impact what this town can afford to do and keep up with. I really think that it's gonna have a very detrimental effect on what people vote for. There is little choice in, in the school budget. They don't have to follow the same laws that we do to put out a warrant. They get to have a budget vote between the schools, and then ten days later, they have to have a budget validation vote, vote. There isn't a sixty-day period where they get to do absentee voting, they don't have a lot of stuff like that. So it's, it's a, it's a very quick process. And the budget generally passes because most people kind of skip over that one. And I would urge people, don't skip it this year.
Tim, in your conversation, did you, I understand that Richmond is having a vote to withdraw from the RSU, is that accurate?
I believe that is accurate. I think they did do the, they did complete the process to do that.
Dresden too, I think. Well, I heard that Dresden might, I don't know.
Dresden, as far as I know, was one comment on one selectmen at a selectboard meeting, and it was made to the reporter. However, they're getting hammered pretty hard again also, so I, I wouldn't be surprised.
So, did you happen to have any discussion with these, our school board representative about what impact that would have to the budget if, if Richmond votes to withdraw? Would the withdrawal be effective with this budget year? What would be the impact to the remainder of the towns in the RSU? Did you discuss any of that?
I, I did not, but I can tell you that they don't get to just withdraw if they, if they vote to. There has to be a settlement. And it takes about a year.
Well, I, I did talk with the superintendent a couple weeks ago, and I asked the questions about Richmond. And I believe she told me that it would not be coming up in this fiscal year if they do vote to withdraw. It would have impacted the following year.
I got a quick question for Tim about Dresden. You made a comment about that it's likely that they would join Richmond, which they do frequently when they do...
No, I, I, I think it's, to me, it seems, they, they've been pretty upset the last few years about their assessments and their lack of say, I guess, is, is, is what I can allude to. And I, I would not be surprised if they followed Richmond, created an exploratory committee, and started the process to withdraw. But they have not as yet.
I would not be surprised. Thanks.
And quite frankly, I'm gonna wait for Monday night, but I, 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 I think we, we, we've been down that road before, and it might happen again.
No, I was waiting for Tim to get done. Okay, next is a public comment? Any public?
Did we skip over select...
There's a hand, I think.
No. I, I was...
We were...
I saw a hand.
Sam Shepard?
There is a hand, Sam Shepard.
Hi, everyone. I just have a, Sam Shepard from the Kennebec Journal. I just have sort of a procedural question here. Can I just get you guys to identify yourselves around the horn here? I don't think I've met all of you in person.
Sure. Timothy McDonald.
Mike Bukowski.
Don Gladwin, you've met me, or you haven't met me, but we've talked a lot.
Harold Jones.
All right, thank you, guys. I, I definitely confused Tim and Harold, so I'm glad I asked. Thank you.
I, I don't know whether to take offense to that, or he should take offense to that, I'm not sure.
I am much prettier than Harold.
Okay.
Okay, any other public comment, questions? Okay. Next is to grant a mobile home park license to G and G Associates for their two mobile home parks.
We have before you an application, two applications from G and G Associates for their mobile home parks at 962 Main Street and fifteen Blue Rock Road. These are yearly licenses that are due by May first of each year. And they were kindly filed this year. Last year, we did have an issue, but I sent their renewal application out to them a few weeks before it was due, and he got right back to me with his list, and the assessor's agent has the list of all the mobile home parks owners in their both parks. So this is ready for your approval this evening.
Not that it matters for his license, but are there any mobile home park residents with delinquent taxes?
I, off the top of my head, I don't know.
Because I remember one year, we did have actually an abandoned property that hadn't had taxes paid on it several years, the town had forgive the taxes for it because it mysteriously disappeared in the night one night.
Well, we, we've had that discussion in the past too, that he does have an issue every now and then with someone abandoning the mobile homes.
But that's really not his...
No.
You can't do anything about that.
We renew.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, I think just... Oh, so Tim made a motion to approve the licenses, and Harold seconded it. How old does it favor?
Yes.
And Chris?
I'm, I'm kind of upset that she's sitting in a view with, you know, trees in Florida waffling behind her in a beautiful summer.
More of a tan than last week, too.
Why, why didn't you give us a nice view of the beach?
Well, the beach is just a little ways away, and I'm hoping, you know, sunset down here is not till like seven forty-five, so if I can go see my last sunset before I leave, it'll be good on the Gulf, so.
Is she telling us to hurry?
I think so.
I'm not telling you to hurry, I'm, I'm just hoping, that's all.
The next thing is a public hearing, and to approve the warrant for the June eighth election.
Will we go into a public hearing? Yes, no?
You don't have to do that. Look, he can, he can open it. I've gotta read it afterwards anyway. He doesn't have to open a public hearing. I mean, he can open a public hearing without voting.
Normally, we make a motion and do that kind of stuff, but...
We've always done that fast.
For some reason. So, Harold made a motion to go into public hearing, and Tim seconded it? And so, we go into a public hearing? Well, first of all, you want to go into public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. And Chris? Okay.
All right, before I read the warrant, I just want to make a couple comments. I would like to thank very much the department heads, the division heads in the town for presenting a responsible budget that looks at what is best for the town of Monmouth and not for their individual departments. There are no egos in this budget. Everyone pulled together and recognized that we were coming out of, hopefully, the experience with the pandemic, and there were still a lot of unknowns. And everyone stepped up the plate and presented a very responsible budget. And I want to give a special thanks to Lori Walker, who has spent hours and hours and hours working on the numbers, reworking the numbers, going over them with me. Lori and I are very, very meticulous about making sure that everything is right for you tonight. And she just puts in a ton of hours on this over the last few months. This process has come together since, starting in December, with Lori sending out the first notices to the department. So, special thank you to Lori, and she'll kill me for doing this, but Lori saw her twentieth anniversary with the town of Monmouth on Friday of last week. So we're, we're celebrating that and really appreciating Lori's help with everything that we do, so. With that...
There'll be cake.
There was cake today, you missed it, I'm sorry. I did try to bring Lori's favorite cake to her, but she was happy. All right. So, the first article would be Article Three on your warrant. Shall the town vote to appropriate ten thousand dollars from the fund balance to fund the senior citizen property tax assistance program, which provides refunds up to five hundred dollars to those who are sixty-five years of age and have been a resident of the town for ten years? Selectmen recommend yes. No questions?
So, also ask the public, is there any questions from the public?
No questions.
Article Four, shall the town raise and appropriate one million fifty-eight thousand eight-hundred-sixteen dollars fifty-four cents from general taxation for general administration? Selectmen recommend yes. Expense items, administration, three hundred eight thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars. Assessing, thirty-seven thousand six hundred eighty-three dollars. Elected officials, fifteen thousand two hundred twenty-eight dollars. Employee benefits, four hundred twenty-nine thousand thirty dollars thirty-seven cents. General assistance, nine thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars. Risk management, one hundred twenty thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars. Town clerk, town meeting, fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars. Treasurer, thirty-two thousand one hundred dollars. Unclassified, eleven thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Boards, committee and committees, twenty-five thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars forty-four cents. Code enforcement, thirty-eight thousand four hundred thirty-four dollars. Town office, fifteen thousand two hundred forty-nine dollars seventy-three cents.
Are there any questions?
Hand up.
Yeah. I, I can't see who it is.
Dave Shaw.
Oh, it's Dave Shaw. Hi, Dave.
Hi, good evening, all. I just have a quick question on the administration side of it. Is that where the town planner is hidden?
I haven't got that in front of me. It's either in the code enforcement budget, or it's in the boards and committees, but I do think that it's coming out of the code enforcement budget. I don't have the detail sheet with me. I can get you that answer, Dave.
Okay, how much is the town planner?
Ninety-five hundred dollars.
Is that something that is up for discussion here? Why are we having a town planner when we haven't had one in all these years? That usually the, the select board and the town manager are there, takes care of that process. I don't see why we have to spend almost ten thousand dollars for a planner at this point. Especially when the budget is, is high, and like the, Tim said, the school's gonna eat out over a mill. That's someplace that we really can put off. I don't see why we have to have it. And also, I, I believe the boards and committees is high. I don't know why that, that jumped. It was, it was never, never that high unless we had a revow year.
Well, I don't have the detailed budget in front of me this evening on this one, but the planner is up to ninety-five hundred dollars a year. It depends on how much we need planning services for our planning board. I decided that I would like to have a professional planner who is trained in all things planning to assist our planning board. It's been working out really well. It's the same person who is helping us on our comprehensive plan, so it dovetails very nicely with that service as well. And we actually have savings in the code enforcement budget, even with the ninety-five hundred dollars in there.
So, boards and committees didn't go up, right?
I didn't think so.
We didn't, we didn't ask, we didn't...
We moved some things around, so it may look like one is up.
I believe board and committees is up four or five thousand dollars from last year.
I can look it up.
I don't know if that's, is, is that the purpose of not having the code enforcement officer meet with the planning board anymore? Is that, is that the ramification of that?
I believe that the boards and committees is up because that's where we added the KV cog planner.
Okay, so that would make sense.
Yep.
Is that gonna be an in-person person? Or is that gonna be a, a person that stays at KV cog? Is it gonna be in the town office?
This is a person from KV cog who is not an employee of the town, so we're not paying, paying employee benefits or expenses of that nature. And he will be working with the planning board at the planning board meetings and helping to get the planning board packets ready.
But he has an office in the town office?
No, he's a KV cog. He's a KV cog employee. This is untracked services.
It just seems like it's, you know, if we have, if we do have a code enforcement, and I was one, everybody knows I was one for sixteen years. If we have a code enforcement officer, it was my job to go to the planning board. And I don't know why we have to now just pawn that off onto somebody else when the code enforcement officer's not gonna know what the heck is going on. That's just a comment from me. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Article Five, shall the town raise and appropriate seventy-two thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars seventy-six cents from general taxation for public utilities accounts? Selectmen recommend yes. Expense items, streetlights, thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. Hydrant rental, fifty-nine thousand two hundred sixty-five dollars seventy-six cents.
Are there any questions? Article Six?
Article Six, shall the town appropriate two hundred dollars from the Comston Prize Fund and raise and appropriate from the general taxation the sum of twenty-three thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars for a total of twenty-three thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars for the below-listed special projects? Selectmen recommend yes. Expense items, cemetery care, ten thousand dollars. Comston Prize, two hundred dollars. KV cap transportation, six hundred fifty dollars. Family violence, one thousand dollars. Memorial Day services, seven hundred dollars. Senior Spectrum, two thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars. Food Bank, one hundred fifty dollars. RCAM, five thousand five hundred dollars. American Red Cross, five hundred dollars. Crisis Counseling Center, one thousand dollars. Community Health and Counseling, thirty dollars. Tri-County Mental Health, two hundred fifty dollars. MPBN, one hundred dollars. Maine General Hospice, five hundred dollars. Kennebec Behavioral Health, two hundred fifty dollars. And Lifeflight, five hundred dollars.
Are there any questions? Article Seven?
Shall the town raise and appropriate from general taxation eighty-nine thousand eighty dollars for the eighty-nine thousand, yeah. Eighty-nine thousand eighty dollars for the capital improvement program for the following accounts. Selectmen recommend yes. Comston Hall repairs, forty-five thousand. Fire equipment, four thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars. This is for the generator reserve. Police reserve for cruiser, twenty-nine thousand. Online tax payments and permitting software, five thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars. Meeting streaming equipment, five thousand dollars.
Are there any questions? Article Eight?
Article Eight, shall the town raise and appropriate fifty-seven thousand sixty dollars from general taxation for ambulance rescue services? Selectmen recommend yes.
Any questions? Article Nine?
Article Nine, shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred ninety-seven thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollars from general taxation for law enforcement police protection? Selectmen recommend yes. Expense items, police department, three hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred thirty-seven dollars. Animal control, ten thousand two hundred forty-four dollars.
Any questions? Article Ten?
Article Ten, shall the town raise and appropriate one hundred thirty-three thousand five hundred sixty dollars from general taxation for fire protection? Selectmen recommend yes.
Any questions? Onto Article Eleven?
Article Eleven, shall the town raise and appropriate sixty-three thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars fifty-two cents from general taxation for public safety dispatching services? Selectmen recommend yes.
Any questions?
What was the increase on dispatching from last, over last year, three percent?
I'm not sure. I don't have, I don't have the percentage in front of me.
That's what it usually is. I just wanted to make sure they weren't doing an extra upgrade or something this year.
That sounds about right.
It went from forty-nine thousand to fifty-seven thousand.
Fifty-seven?
Yeah. That's what you, that's what's, that's what's there. Wait a minute. Maybe I have it wrong.
That doesn't sound right.
No, it's not fifty-seven. I, I get this budget summary I have must be old.
It went from... It went from sixty-one thousand three hundred sixty-eight dollars eighty-eight cents to sixty-three thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars.
That's a little less than three percent.
Right.
I thought it was sixty-something dollars.
Yeah, I wonder what this, where this came from. Okay, on to Article Twelve?
Article Twelve, shall the town raise and appropriate ninety-four thousand six hundred thirty-three dollars twenty-four cents from general taxation for Comston Hall operating expenses? Selectmen recommend yes. For Comston Hall operating expenses. Selectmen recommend yes.
Are there any questions? Article thirteen?
Article thirteen, shall the town raise and appropriate eighty thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars from the general taxation for the Comston Public Library? Selectmen recommend yes.
Any questions? Article fourteen?
Article fourteen, shall the town raise and appropriate one hundred one thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars? From general taxation for parks and recreation programs. Selectmen recommend yes.
Any questions? Article fifteen?
Article fifteen, shall the town raise and appropriate one million eighty-four thousand three hundred sixty-three dollars from general taxation? For public works accounts. Selectmen recommend yes. Expense items, highway, seven hundred eighty-nine thousand eight hundred twenty dollars. Transfer station, two hundred ninety-four thousand five hundred forty-three dollars.
Are there any questions? Article sixteen?
Article sixteen, shall the town raise and appropriate forty-three thousand ninety-eight dollars from general taxation? For building maintenance purposes. Selectmen recommend yes.
Any questions? Article seventeen?
Article seventeen, shall the town raise and appropriate three hundred forty-six thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars fifteen cents? From general taxation for debt retirement and debt service. Selectmen recommend yes. Expense items, debt retirement, two hundred seventy-three thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars eighty-five cents. Debt service, seventy-three thousand one dollar thirty cents.
Are there any questions? Onto article eighteen?
Article eighteen, shall the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into a three-year lease agreement for the purchase of a snowplow for the public works department? Annual payments anticipated at fifty-five thousand per year. Selectmen recommend yes.
If I might point out, I believe that's a larger truck. That's not the larger truck?
No.
That's just the same regular as I, yes. Okay, my mistake. I thought we were looking to get a larger truck so you could go further between runs.
No. Turn around someplace.
Well, I.
On the route that he goes.
Yeah, that's very possible.
And this payment won't hit this budget. It won't hit until the following year's budget.
Right.
Are there any questions? Any other questions? Got a question. Annual payments anticipated? Why is it anticipated? That sounds a little vague.
Well, that's what it's gonna be, but I, the, it's like the bond questions where you put in an estimate of what the interest rate is going to be. It could be a little, you know, shy of fifty-five thousand or it could be a couple of dollars over. And that's also based on current interest rates. Depends on when we purchase this.
Thank you. Onto article nineteen?
Article nineteen, shall the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into a three-year lease agreement for the purchase of a mini excavator? And trailer for the public works department. Annual payments anticipated at twenty-five thousand dollars per year. Selectmen recommend yes.
Now, that, that one I can make a statement on because I did ask the question. Part of the use of that is planned to help ditch and repair these dirt roads. In anticipation of future paving. There is a lot of work we can do ahead of time to reduce that future cost, and this would help a lot.
And this payment will not be in this year's budget. It would be in the next year's budget.
Any other questions? Article twenty?
Article twenty, shall the town appropriate monies from snowmobile registration fees reimbursed to the town by the treasurer? State of Maine, six dollars per registration for the purpose of grooming and maintaining snowmobile trails? Solely within the municipal limits of the town of Monmouth. Selectmen recommend yes.
Any questions? Article twenty-one?
Article twenty-one, shall the town authorize the board of selectmen to receive taxes from tax club members after the payment due date without interest? Selectmen recommend yes.
Any questions? Article twenty-two?
Article twenty-two, shall the town authorize the board of selectmen to appropriate an estimated amount of four hundred thousand dollars for municipal revenue sharing? And one million eighty-six thousand three hundred nineteen dollars of twenty-twenty-one non-property tax revenue? Which includes seventy-five thousand dollars of unappropriated surplus to reduce the tax commitment. Selectmen recommend yes.
Any questions? Article twenty-three?
Article twenty-three, shall the town vote to require one half of the taxes for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two fiscal year? Due and payable on October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one? And one half of the taxes for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year due April fourteenth, twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two? And to see if the town will vote to require the rate per annum of interest set by the treasurer of the state of Maine, five percent? Be charged on October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one and April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two on all unpaid taxes. In addition, shall the board of selectmen be authorized to postpone the due date of taxes and waive interest when the governor declares a state of emergency? Selectmen recommend yes.
Any questions? Article twenty-four?
Article twenty-four, shall the town authorize the board of selectmen to sell and dispose of any real estate acquired by the town? For non-payment of taxes thereon on such terms as the board of selectmen deem advisable? And execute a quitclaim deed for such property. Said sale shall be conducted by sealed bid after public notice? Including the community advertiser, except for repurchase by original owner or taxpayer of said property? Except that the select board shall use the special sale process required by thirty-six MRSA section nine forty-three C? For qualifying home sit property if it chooses to sell it to anyone other than the former owners. Selectmen recommend yes.
Any questions? Article twenty-five?
Article twenty-five, shall the town authorize the board of selectmen to make municipal expenditures based on the latest approved municipal budget? If the proposed budget in whole or part fails to pass until a proposed municipal budget in whole or in part is approved. Selectmen recommend yes.
Are there any questions? Article twenty-six?
Article twenty-six, shall the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to accept and expend or utilize for its intended purpose? On behalf of the town, any grants or funds awarded or paid to the town by any state or federal agency? Grant or other monetary donation from any other public or private entity? Organization or individual and any gift of personal property. This includes the authority to apply for such grants, funds or donations where an application is required? Or take any other action thereon. Selectmen recommend yes.
Are there any questions? Onto article twenty-seven?
Article twenty-seven, shall the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to dispose of surplus equipment and property through sale or donation of said items? Selectmen recommend yes.
Any questions? Article twenty-eight?
Article twenty-eight, shall the town vote to authorize amendment to the Comprehensive Development Ordinance, section six point two point two point one? Deleting the deadline and adding wording that allows the board of selectmen to set the deadlines for applications to the planning board. Selectmen recommend yes.
Other questions? Article twenty-nine?
Article twenty-nine, shall the town vote to authorize the creation of a building fund for the deposit of sales proceeds from Cattrell Elementary School? And any additional proceeds from the sale of town property? And authorize the selectmen to make expenditures from the account to maintain, repair or improve town property. Selectmen recommend yes.
Are there any questions? Article twenty, article thirty?
Article thirty, shall the town vote to appropriate tax increment financing revenues to the Development Program Fund? For the Tax Increment Financing District? And authorize the board of selectmen to expend funds from the Development Program Fund to be used for purposes based on the district development program? And statutory requirements. Selectmen recommend yes.
Any questions? Article thirty-one?
Article thirty-one, shall the town vote to approve a capital improvement project consisting of the construction and reconstruction of sidewalks in the downtown area of Main Street? Including engineering and design costs, transaction costs and other expenses reasonably related thereto? And appropriate the sum of four hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars to fund the project using Main Street Tax Increment Finance District funds. Selectmen recommend yes.
Are there any questions? Before we move on, are we seeing everybody that's on the Zoom meeting?
No, there's an arrow on the right.
Well, how do we know if they have?
I think if they put their hand up to make a question, they get moved into, into the view.
Yeah, or they can hit the raise hand thing like our reporter did.
Okay, all right. I just want to be sure that.
Or speak up.
The, the, our audio, visual director is. Dennis has got that under control. Awesome.
What was the question that was just read?
Thirty-one?
The sidewalks downtown.
I think that it's important also to point out to anyone listening that. That's gonna be paid from, for from TIF funds and will not impact the mill rate, unlike some other things.
Article thirty-two?
Article thirty-two, shall the town? One, approve a capital improvement project consisting of the demolition of the former Monmouth Middle School? Excluding the eighteen fifty-six Monmouth Academy, the administration building and the playground? And including structural repairs to the eighteen fifty-six building only? Engineering and design costs, transaction costs and other expenses reasonably related thereto? Two, appropriate a sum up to one point seven million dollars to fund the project? Three, authorize the select board to use funds from the sale of Cattrell School? And unexpendanted school maintenance funds to partially fund the appropriation? And authorize the treasurer and chairman of the select board to issue general obligations securities of the town? Including temporary notes in anticipation of the sale thereof? And an aggregate principal amount not to exceed one point five million dollars to fund the balance of the appropriation? And four, delegate to the treasurer and chair of the select board the authority and discretion to fix the dates, maturities? Interest rates, denominations, calls for redemption with or without premium? Form and other details of said securities, including authority to execute and deliver the securities on behalf of the town? Note, the actual amount borrowed may be reduced by fundraising and grants. Selectmen recommend passage of either question thirty-two or question thirty-three.
Other questions about thirty-two? Onto thirty-three?
Article thirty-three, in the event that question thirty-two does not pass? Shall the town, one, approve a capital improvement project consisting of the demolition of the former Monmouth Middle School? And the eighteen fifty-six Monmouth Academy, but excluding the administration building and the playground? And including engineering and design costs, transaction costs and other expenses reasonably related thereto? Two, appropriate the sum of four hundred fifty-two thousand dollars to fund the project? Three, authorize the select board to use funds from the sale of Cattrell School and unexpendanted school maintenance funds to partially fund the appropriation? And authorize the treasurer and chairman of the select board to issue general obligations securities of the town? Including temporary notes in anticipation of the sale thereof? And an aggregate principal amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars to fund the balance of the appropriation? And four, delegate to the treasurer and chair of the select board the authority and discretion to fix the dates, maturities, interest rates? Denominations, calls for redemption, whether or without premium? Form and other details of said securities, including authority to execute and deliver the securities on behalf of the town? Selectmen recommend passage of either question thirty-two or question thirty-three? And the financial statement, do you want me to read the financial statement, Doug?
Sure.
Okay. Financial statement for questions thirty-two and thirty-three? Total town indebtedness, bonds outstanding and unpaid, one million seven hundred ninety-eight thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars. Bonds authorized and unissued, zero. Bonds to be issued if question thirty-two is approved, one million five hundred thousand. Bonds to be issued if question thirty-three is approved, two hundred thousand dollars. Costs at an estimated maximum interest rate of three percent for fifteen-year maturity for question thirty-two? And an estimated maximum interest rate of two point five percent for a ten-year maturity for question thirty-three? The estimated cost of this bond issue will be? Principal, one million five hundred thousand if question thirty-two is approved? Two hundred thousand if question thirty-three is approved? Interest, three hundred ninety-eight thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars seventy-five cents if question thirty-two is approved? Twenty-eight thousand six hundred fifty-three dollars nineteen cents if question thirty-three is approved? Total, one million eight hundred ninety-eight, eight thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars seventy-five cents if question thirty-two is approved? Two hundred twenty-eight thousand six hundred fifty-three dollars nineteen cents if question thirty-three is approved?
The validity thing.
And also, the validity? Of the bonds and of the voter's ratification, the bonds may not be affected by any errors in the above estimates. If the actual amount of the total debt service or the bond issue varies from the estimate? The ratification by the electors is nevertheless conclusive and the validity of the bond issue is not affected by reason of the variance.
Are there any questions? Okay, article. Yes. Dan?
Yeah, I'm just. Are you guys gonna put this out ahead of time? Because I, I'm confused listening to all that. I can just imagine the poor voters, you know, on voting day, having to read all that and try to make a decision, so I hope that.
We normally put the warrant out on the website, available for download. And I'm sure that we can advertise a couple of times and the community advertiser and make a point to it so people can get it. And I'm sure that we'll have copies available at the town office.
In addition to that, I plan to put an aerial view of the property on our webpage? Showing exactly what question thirty-two will do and what thirty-three will do? And also, I believe that there'll probably be what we call a white paper that just basically explains the facts of what those questions are? That we will make sure is available to the public.
Okay, thank you.
When would you expect that to be available?
The white paper?
Yeah.
Before, probably before we make absentee ballots available. So within the next.
I agree.
Next few weeks.
Really convoluted, it's hard. I mean, we're all intimate with it and reading this thing. It's gonna be difficult for people to.
I will help you with that, Linda.
I think I got it. I figured it out on my PC and I did some drawing.
No, no, I mean, the white paper explaining everything.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Article thirty-four?
Article thirty-four, shall the town vote to amend the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance by adding a Recreation Business Lake Protection District? And making related changes to other ordinance provisions? And by changing map forty-three lot thirty from Shoreland Residential District to Recreation Business Lake Protection District? The proposed ordinance text amendments and map amendment are available for review and inspection at the town clerk's office? And will be available at the town meeting. Selectmen recommend yes.
Other questions? This pertains primarily to the Kipewa project, Denise Manna. And. Then there's. An article thirty-five?
Article thirty-five, shall the town authorize the board of selectmen to purchase playground equipment using funds from the sale of the Cattrell Elementary School? To be placed at Monmouth Beach Park at a cost of no more than thirty thousand dollars? Selectmen recommend yes.
Are there questions? I'd like to question the second selection recommendation.
I was just gonna say that. We haven't voted to recommend it.
Well, and it's something that the petitioners wanted, not the selectmen, wanted to put on here.
I did propose it. I wanted it on there.
Okay. So we should, I think we should have a. It should be a vote, I think. Right, right. We should, we should vote on whether to recommend yes or no. Yes. So.
I would certainly move to recommend yes. There seems to be immense public interest in it. And it's something the red committees wanted to do for quite some time. And they are a committee. We do rely on them to provide us with input.
But the committee never voted on this, as I understand it.
It's not what I understand.
Well, I, there's, one of our select board members? Husband is a member of the committee.
We have a question from Joe Weiss. Joe, you'll have to unmute.
Do you want to get a second before you?
Is there a second for Dennis' motion? I'll second the motion just to bring it to a vote. So there's a second for the motion to vote for the select to recommend yes? Oh, and I understand, I understand that. They never voted on it and there really. Hasn't been much thought or planning gone into this, into this particular plan that was submitted. There are, there are alternative. Things which could be. Things which could be, uh, uh, used, put at the beach for? Not just little kids, like, less than ten years old, but kids who are, uh, older? Maybe through, through teenage years, possibly even things that maybe adults might be able, might enjoy. And. Anyway, so, Joanne, did you, yes?
I did, thank you, Chair. This was voted on, was it last meeting? I was in attendance, and there was a vote. It was voted three to two to not put it on, if I'm remembering correctly. I do understand that a petition was circulated, started by Tim. So. It was voted on, it was voted down by the Select Board? And the petition was started by a Select Board member? To raise enough interest in the community, so now it's back? And it was voted on, and the, the recommendation was no. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. I don't appreciate the way it was handled. It was voted on, it was voted down, and now it's back again. Just making a comment. Thank you.
Thank you. You bring up a very good point. Appreciate you bringing that up.
Is there more discussion about that, the motion? Selectmen recommend yes? So, all those in favor of putting?
Hold please. Joe Fletcher, go ahead and unmute.
Yes, Joe.
Hi, good evening all. The Rec Committee strongly recommended this. We voted on this? In our committee to, uh, to pass this on to the selectmen to, to make a determination. So the Rec Committee did discuss this at length and voted on it? To put this on the, on the warrant. Thank you.
We, we just heard that he. That the Rec Committee voted not to put it on.
No, the Rec Committee did not vote. The Rec Committee voted to put it on. All the members of the committee recommended that this be put on. I don't know what the Ms. Weiss is talking about.
She a member of the committee?
No, she's not.
I believe she's, Joanne is talking about the fact that as a select board, we voted three to one not to put it on the warrant.
Okay, that's what I thought.
She's not talking about the Rec Committee. It was my understanding that there was discussion during the Rec Committee meetings about a playground? But nothing ever went further than that, and they were going to do research and come up with plans to bring it back. Um, I, my understanding was that it never, you know, went beyond. Obviously, I wasn't there. The, the minutes should be published about what went on at the Rec Committee meetings. I think the minutes have to be published? After they're approved. So if we have Rec Committee meetings posted and publish the minutes? Then we'll be able to all understand what goes on at Rec Committee meetings.
Absolutely, I agree with that one hundred percent. And the minutes were taken. We can share those minutes with you.
Anything else? Okay, so, uh, we have a motion by Tim to put a selectman recommend yes? And Harold, second by Harold. All those in favor of putting selectmen recommend yes? Uh, all those opposed to selectmen recommending yes? So the motion.
Yes, yes.
Motion fails? Selectmen recommend no, then we'll be.
Please, yes. Need a motion for the selectmen to recommend no.
So. I'll make a motion that the selectmen recommend no.
I'll second that.
And any discussion of that? All those in favor of selectmen recommending no?
Yes.
Thank you. Those, yes, any, oh, those opposed, sorry, to the selectmen recommending no. Okay.
So I'm going to have to change this back page now to no, so, um, assuming that the warrant is approved? We need a motion for that. I'll have it at the town office if you can stop by and sign it.
So, that was, that's thirty-three on it, right?
That was thirty-five.
Thirty-five. So what we need?
Where, before we go beyond, where is the question that says? If any of the? Questions fail? We operate on last year's budget?
It was in there earlier.
It was earlier. It doesn't say we operate on last year's budget. Not worded quite that way, but it was in there earlier.
Which one was it?
I'm finding. Um, okay. Shall the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to make municipal expenditures based on the latest approved budget? If the proposed budget in whole or part fails to pass until a proposed municipal budget in whole or in part?
And what's the question number?
Twenty-five.
So we need a motion to approve the warrant. Will we approve the warrant? Second. There's a motion by Harold, second by Mike, to approve the warrant for June eighth. All is in favor?
Yes.
All those opposed? Want to oppose?
I oppose because of the short-sighted response on the last question.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, what opposed? So I'll disclose the public hearing, and we're on to warrant twenty-one.
Warrant twenty-one, checks over a thousand dollars. Dennis K. Burke Incorporated? Four thousand three hundred seven dollars eighty-five cents for Public Works Fuel. EcoMaine for recycling, two thousand one hundred twenty-nine dollars ninety cents. Baby and Oil Heating Fuel for Compton Hall, the Fire Department, Police Department, two thousand two hundred two dollars sixty-five cents. GDI Services, our monthly cleaning service, three thousand fifty dollars. Kennebec Valley Humane Society, this is the second quarter fee for animal control. One thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars twenty cents. May Municipal Association Workers Conference Insurance, North Sea Audit, three thousand nine hundred thirty-one dollars. Main Waste to Energy Solid Waste Services, two thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars sixteen cents. May Municipal Employees Health Trust for the employees' insurance, twenty thousand six hundred sixty-four dollars seventy cents. Northeast Emergency Apparatus LLC for parts and repairs, one thousand seventy-nine dollars. Purchase power, this is postage and fees, one thousand eighty-nine dollars thirty-two cents. Our issue number two, this is our monthly payment to this, our issue, four hundred thirty thousand six hundred fifty dollars sixty-five cents. Treasurer, State of Maine, for titles, taxes, plates, five thousand one hundred ten dollars twenty-five cents, five thousand six hundred two dollars sixteen cents? Five thousand one hundred sixty-four dollars six cents. And to the Town of Winter for ambulance service, twenty-four thousand six hundred seventeen dollars.
Is that it? Will we accept warrant number twenty-one? Second. So there's a motion by Mike, second by Harold, to approve warrant twenty-one. All those in favor?
So we're just accepting it and not paying it? We're just. I'm just applying to point that out. I'll say yes.
Is there a vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Chris?
Chris, yes, okay. I, I'll point out. If that school budget? That they've, that we get here, the worst-case scenario in past? It would be four hundred eighty dollars. Four hundred eighty thousand dollars instead of four hundred thirty dollars. Four hundred thirty thousand dollars. Wow.
Be almost fifty thousand dollars a month for it.
Move we adjourn so Chris can watch the sunset.
I think it's already, it's already sat, Chris, forget it. I, oh, I had one question about, written on this. Written on here, it says forty, thirty-eight, fifty, a ton. This is.
No, just ignore that.
Twenty years ago.
It says as of March twenty.
No, that list is today. The list is today, that's what you got.
About ten dollars more than last year.
Up at the top, Doug, eighty-three fifty.
But that's not current. No, all right. Thank you. So, all in favor of adjourn?
Oh, we didn't get a second, did we?
Second?
I seconded it.
Of course you did.
So, all in favor of adjourn?
Have a nice morning back.
Double, Chris?
I'll be back in Maine tomorrow.
Chris, are you in favor of adjourned? Yes? Thank you. That's why she said it's her last sunset. She wanted to go see it.